beginning to affect the quality of our education. And you all know, because you are scholars, that there is a common saying that to destroy a nation, you don't have to use an atomic bomb or to use long-range missiles. All you need to do is to lower the quality of education. And if there is exam cheating, you will have destroyed a nation. So when I came into office, among the first things that I did, because it was important that we save our education system, I appointed a forty-two-person task force made of education professionals, people who had run schools and universities and colleges, people who had experience. And they took almost eight months. And I tasked them with sorting out the issues in our education sector. These great professionals, and I have every reason to believe they did a good job. They came up with recommendations on what to do with CBC, recommendations that we have implemented. And to a great extent, we now have an aligned competence-based education system. They also recommended what I needed to do in terms of pupil-teacher ratio. And it's the reason why I have hired fifty-six thousand new teachers in the last two years, the largest in the history of Kenya. And it is also the reason why we are implementing the student-centered funding model that is aimed at sorting out the challenges that are in our universities. We are one year in. Last year, we admitted students using this model. And what this model has done is that we have taken the amount that we are funding our universities from an average of forty-five billion shillings every year to eighty-two billion shillings every year. That is the quantum of additional resources we are making available, both for help, for scholarships that go to our universities. The biggest challenge that universities had was that they had inadequate funds because we promised, or government promised, that they would sponsor students, both loan and scholarship, up to eighty percent. But they didn't meet their end of the bargain. And we ended up with a big crisis. As I have told you, we ended up with debts of close to one hundred and eighty billion shillings owed to our universities. As a result, universities could not teach the courses that they were offering to our students. And we ran the real risk of lowering the quality of our education. And as I have told you, you know what kind of a risk that poses to our nation. The new student-centered funding model has five bands. The banding did not start with this model. Everybody should know that. We started the banding in nineteen ninety-six. There has always been banding. It didn't start with this model. I know there is a push that maybe this banding started with this model. It did not. It's always been there. All we did is instead of having four bands, we made it five. And we have reasons for that. And I'll explain. Number two, the loan component, again, did not start with this model. I went to university in nineteen eighty-seven as a pressure. And I had a loan, just like you do. I paid my loan. My loan was fifty-five thousand. There was an interest of two percent. The statistics are there with the High Education Loans Board. I paid my loan facility with an interest, so I paid sixty-nine thousand. In fact, I paid my loan when I got my first salary job as a Member of Parliament. So the loan component is not a new thing. It's what has always been there. It's what makes the model sustainable. What we have done is, and I want to put this in context. We have about ten thousand secondary schools. Three thousand five hundred secondary schools in mostly rural areas, informal settlements, marginalized areas. Three thousand five hundred, they don't send a single child to university. Whole communities, whole villages don't have a single child they send to university. It is the reason that I decided to hire fifty-five thousand teachers to send to these schools. It is the reason why this year, we're going to build one thousand eight hundred laboratories in those schools. Because those schools, many of them don't have a single laboratory. Many of the students who do exam in Form Four, they need, first time, a laboratory setting during the examination. That disturbs me a lot, that we have close to a million and two hundred thousand children who go to school and they have no chance of going to university because of the school they attend. Let's put that aside. In the new funding model, about twelve percent of the students are in Band One. Band One are straight children who are orphans, all of them without exception, go to Band One. Children who are associated with disability, all of them go to Band One. Children whose parents are on cash transfer because they are classified as vulnerable, all of them go to Band One. And students whose parents earn below six thousand shillings a month. All those students go to Band One. And this Band One, we changed it slightly. Everybody used to get eighty percent scholarship and loan. We decided that for these kids, we raise it, but we raise it to ninety-five percent. From eighty to ninety-five percent, they get loan and scholarship. Seventy percent scholarship, twenty-five percent loan, and only five percent their parents pay. And that is roughly, maybe something below five thousand shillings a semester. And it is because they truly need our help. Band Two are the next, whose parents earn below twenty-five thousand shillings. They get ninety percent loan and scholarship, eighty percent ninety percent, eighty percent loan, eighty percent scholarship, seventy percent eighty percent scholarship, sorry, and ten percent loan, and their household pays ten percent. Number three, they get eighty percent scholarship, ten percent they pay, loan, and ten percent household they pay. These are the three most important because they affect the vulnerable. The others, Band Four and Band Five, these are the people whose parents earn up to seventy thousand are in Band Four. And in Band Five, the people whose parents earn beyond seventy thousand. So the assessments are being done by a means testing instrument. They are not an arbitrary figure. A means testing instrument that has been in operation since nineteen ninety-six. I don't know whether the people from High Education Loans Board are here. When did the means testing instrument come into? Is it ninety-one or ninety-six? Ninety? Nineteen ninety-six. That means testing instrument has been there since nineteen eighty-six. And it has parameters from a multi-agency approach. We have parameters from Kenya Revenue Authority. We have parameters from Kenya National Bureau of Statistics. We have parameters from NIMs, which is the education portal for registration of persons. We have statistics from our ecosystem that serves the registration of the vulnerable in the Ministry of Labour and many other variables that are put together. It is as objective as it can. And we keep improving on it to make sure that it assesses our children correctly. There's been cases, legitimate cases, of some students who have been placed in the wrong band. And sometimes it's because of the information that has been supplied. And there is an opportunity for a parent or a student. If they are bonded in a band that they don't think they belong, there is an appeals process. Last year, I think we got nine thousand or ten thousand appeals. This year, we've gotten how many appeals so far? How many appeals so far? Twenty-six thousand appeals have come in and they are being processed. And they have undertaken that any appeal of the one hundred and, how many students applied? One hundred and thirty-four thousand students applied, twenty-six thousand have appealed, and they are being processed. They've given me the word that the processing will take three weeks. And every parent or student will get their responses. Especially if they have supplied information and corrected the information that's sometimes in the portal. Some of the time, when students go to our cyber and sometimes the cyber keys in information that's not correct, we end up with the wrong information. And sometimes we end up with students in the wrong band. But overall, it's a process that has been tested, it's a process that has worked. And we want to use it to take our education to the next level. Let me conclude so that I can take questions from you. Let me conclude by saying I have engaged stakeholders. I have had already three meetings with Vice Chancellors because I wanted to get feedback from them as to whether the model is working and whether the model is sustainable. In all the three meetings, the Vice Chancellors and the managers of our universities have confirmed to me that the model is working and that together. In fact, one Vice Chancellor told me when he told the people in his ecosystem the model is working, he was told, yeah, it's working for the university because you can now afford to pay your suppliers and salaries, but it's not working for the student and the parent. But then I asked him, if it is working for the university, the university belongs to the students and the parents? Or at least, so I think. The other feedback that I have got from the Vice Chancellors is that we need to do more explaining. The students need to understand it. The parents need to understand it. And that's part of the reason why I decided to have this town hall so that we can have a conversation. I've also engaged students in different fora. They've told me their concerns. They've told me about this loan. They don't want this loan. They wanted to be a scholarship. And I have told them the loan is part of what sustains this. If I didn't pay my loan, possibly you couldn't get a chance to learn. So everybody, it's a continuous process. You pay today, you learn today, you pay tomorrow so that somebody else can learn the next day, and they pay, and we all, it's a relay of sorts. They have raised issues about some of the students that are being put in the wrong bands. And I have explained to them that these are issues that we can correct. So ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this town hall. I know I've taken a bit long. Welcome to this town hall. I will I'll field questions. Please be as candid, as open as possible. And there are no consequences for asking any question. So. Karibu.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency. I'm standing on the already established protocol. Your Excellency, my name is Evans Mosanga. I come from Chukai University. I'm a law student, I did fourth year. And Your Excellency, thank you for laying the background. And Your Excellency, we have seen the principles that you're coming from. But Your Excellency, in the five thousand three hundred students that Chukai University has called so far, there is a concern of loans and interest. Your Excellency, loans and interest are at the core of this particular model and are the core of the concern of these particular students. Your Excellency, I was just looking at the statistics just to be factual in nature. And I was seeing that by twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, we had around a hundred and twenty thousand defaulters. That's an estimate of eight point five billion shillings due to these loans and interest. When I was looking at the statistics in the United States of America, we had a debt crisis of around one point six trillion US dollars and forty-eight million defaulters. So Your Excellency, the point of concern is, can these loans be made as grants? That's number one, Your Excellency. And why isn't that the case? Because you've already said that you can't make them grants and you can't make them scholarships. So number two, Your Excellency, can we increase the grace period for the repayment of these particular loans? Or number three, Your Excellency, can we reduce the interest at which we pay these particular loans? Your Excellency, that's part of what we discussed in our small barasa and we hope your indulgence in that particular matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mosanga. Maybe I can take another two so that I can answer them. Do we take it from the same side? Or maybe we can try another side here?
Your Excellency, I'm Newton Kiplating Lagat, the President Corporative University of Kenya. I've got one serious problem that it's really affecting the public universities diploma students. They've been denied scholarship. They've been denied HEF, that is, High Education Funds. And to add on that, they do not qualify for help. That means they are going to educate themselves when taking their diplomas. It does not end there. When they graduate from diploma, they transit to degree. For you to qualify for scholarship or HEF, you must have transited from high school or secondary school to a campus through coops. Diploma students are not in coops. They've already gone. So that means you've educated yourself in your diploma. You're again going to educate yourself when taking your degree. The new funding model has not addressed that. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we can take one from this side? A lady for a change, maybe?
Thank you. Your Excellency, my name is Mogesi Maroa. I'm a concerned citizen, a youth leader from Kurya Migori County and the president of Mount Kenya University Parkland Slow Campus. Your Excellency, you've said time and again that this new funding model is student-based. Well, my question is, why is it that students from private universities are only given loans as opposed to scholarships, just like it is in public universities? Yet these students are all from taxpayers of this country. Thank you.
Final one from here?
Thank you so much, His Excellency. My name is Bonaya Rover from Kenya University, a sixth-year architect student, anticipating graduation in December. At the preamble of your speech, you began by denoting that education is an equalizer. Therefore, I have two questions. One, if indeed education is an equalizer, how will this new funding model assist those persons with living with disability? Because you do believe disability is not inability. My second question goes to, I'm from Tana River County. So we are believed to be those that come from marginalized areas of this country. So you've spoken about cybers. In my local area, the next cyber you normally travel close to about forty-six kilometers. I believe you've been there. I'm Anam Nagani. So mine is to ask on these persons that live in marginalized areas if they will be able to access internet and all this connectivity for them to be able to be put along this new funding model. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I, maybe I should answer those questions first? Maybe starting with Bonaya. Bonaya, first congratulations. Sixty is quite something, you know? And I wish you well. Students who live with disability, as I have said, in this model, we have actually said that those students living with disability, they automatically qualify for Band One. They get ninety-five percent funding, both scholarship and loan. Eighty percent loan, fifteen percent scholarship. Help me, where is the PS? It is Band One? Again, so that I don't?
Your Excellency, ninety-five percent government support, seventy percent scholarships, and twenty-five percent loan.
Okay, seventy percent scholarship and twenty-five percent loan. Correct. So those are the students and the parents only pay five percent. In the old model, they were paying twenty percent was what was outlined. Secondly, you are aware that people living with severe disability, we have expanded the numbers of citizens who now qualify for cash transfer. We had one point two million citizens. We've now expanded that to one point seven million citizens. We just recruited another half a million aged orphans and people living with disability for us to be able to look after the vulnerable. Because as a society, we have to look out for the people who are vulnerable, especially those who live with disability. Number two, you asked me about cyber. It is true. I was in Tana River actually about a month and a half ago. And I can confirm that the distances are far. But the good news is this. If you speak to your Member of Parliament, we have already agreed with them that they will set up an ICT hub in every ward in Kenya. We have changed the law. The CDF law that was used for just building schools, we changed the law. I signed the law into effect. And now we are using CDF to build an ICT hub in every ward for three reasons. Reason number one is to make sure that ICT infrastructure is available to citizens, including students. Number two is because we have a big program on digital jobs. And number three, we want to encourage digital commerce and we want government services to be available on that digital space. And therefore, citizens don't have to come to Nairobi or to go to other areas. They can access government services from those ICT hubs. So we have a plan around the ICT hubs. I got a brief yesterday. We are now delivering cyber, we are, sorry, we are now delivering internet using Kenya power lines. It's easier. So every place where we will have a Kenya power line, it will be possible to access the internet. We have already rolled out that program. Mogesi Maroa, Maroa. Sorry if I get your number right. You have a very valid point that private universities have students whose parents are taxpayers. That's correct. Public universities are run using public funds. We sponsor, as Government of Kenya, public universities. Private universities have sponsors. They have foundations. They are run by people who have networks of raising funds, either using foundations or other means. either using foundations or other means, which sometimes as government we don't have. And because we value the fact that even those in private universities are also Kenyan students, and they, their parents are taxpayers, that is why we haven't shut the door on them. We have said, we are going to make public resources available to those students as loans, the same way we are making public resources as loans available to students in uh public universities. The only reason, um Mogesi, why we in this model, we have said we cannot provide for scholarship is because in the past, we said we are going to give them scholarship. And because we didn't have the money, we didn't, and we put many of those private universities in a lot of trouble. In fact, one public university closed down. Because we took students to them, they trained the students, we owed them money, they couldn't pay their staff, they couldn't pay, they closed down. So it is better, we keep our word, it is better for us to say, we, this is the much we can do, rather than for us to say we can do so much. Today, we have a debt of about fifty one billion shillings owed to our private universities. It is a debt that we must pay, but it is unfair for us to continue to accumulate debt. It is better we tell them, for the moment, we cannot afford, but in the future, whenever situation improves, we can reconsider. My good friend, Mr. Lagat, you've made a case for diploma students that they don't qualify, and you, I think your question is, um diploma students who are studying in universities. The loans and provisions we have made are for students in our Tibet. And I will tell you where the difference is, you know, as a way of making sure that our Tibet function, when I was Minister for Higher Education, I found out that it was cheaper to go to university than to go to a Tibetan institution. That was the case. Because we didn't consider properly Tibet. And it is one challenge I had to deal with. Because for a very long time, as a country, we considered Tibet as a place for students who have, who are failures, for lack of a better word. And that was a very wrong classification. And that is why when I became Minister for Higher Education, I brought a very big conversation. In fact, it was a very controversial conversation. I remember one Vice Chancellor of more university than Professor Ogot saying that the minister is causing confusion because this Tibet thing is not the thing to do. But the reality is, whether you go to Germany, whether you go to Australia, many of their students go to Tibet institutions. There is a lot of value in us balancing our education between knowledge on one end and competence and skills on another end. And therefore, it is the reason why I pushed very hard. When I was Minister in um twenty two oh nine, twenty ten, there were only maybe twenty thousand students in our Tibet. I started the first thirty Tibet institutions. Today, I am very happy that we have seven hundred and twenty thousand students in Tibet from twenty thousand. And we have made huge progress. And we have closed many skill gap, skill